Will everybody else stand for the pledge, followed by a short, long silence? Can you please lead us in the pledge? The warning to the nations.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in our hearts.
Now, please be seated. First, we have approval of the agenda. Do we have a motion? Make a motion. Do we have a second?
A second.
Any discussion? All in favor, stick your bow up, state the "yea."
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Next is recognition, Mr. Dean.
Mr. Chairman, I think first, we're going to start with Coach Carroll with the indoor track state competitors. Coach Carroll and her team.
On behalf of Lee High School Track and Field Team, we would like to say thank you to Superintendent Mr. Dean and all school board members on your continued support and recognition of these student athletes. Success doesn't come from what you do occasionally, it comes from what you do consistently. These athletes have experienced success in more ways than one, and the question always remains the same: Are they willing to do it again? Are they willing to be all-in? The 2025 indoor season was decorated with many accomplishments. At the Region 2D Championships, both the boys and girls claimed their Region 2D Indoor Team Championship titles. Connor Early and Savannah Parsons received the Male and Female Athletes of the Year, and we had multiple Individual All-Region and Region Champions. At the Class II State Championships, the girls' team claimed the VHSL Class II Indoor State Championship Team Title, which was not an easy feat. We battled for those two days. We knew kind of going in who our competition was. It was Floyd, who we shared this state title with, and it was an exciting two days. And just to see these girls rise to the occasion once again really is a testament to their character, to their dedication, their perseverance of never giving up and always rising to the Savannah Parsons was the State Meet and Field MVP. The boys' team, they finished fifth. Out of 28 scoring teams, there was a total of 32 teams there. That was very impressive for them to finish fifth as a team. There were multiple Individuals All-State and State Champions, which we will recognize at this time. But before we recognize the team members, I would like to take this time to recognize two very important individuals. Coach Joey Carroll and (I'm going to get emotional) and Coach Justin Barnett. I get to coach alongside these guys. They're a great coaching staff, who I believe is one of the best in the state, and I thank them for everything that they do, and I wouldn't have it any other way. So, thank you to these two men.
If I had to coach with me, I'd cry. And I'd cry because of them.
At this time, we would like to recognize our All-State and State Champion performers. First, we have Connor Early. He was second place in the long jump, second place in the four-by-two relay, fifth place in the triple jump, fifth place in the four-by-four relay, and seventh place in the 55-meter dash, which is pretty impressive that everything that he competed in at the State Meet, he was All-State. Owen Grace, same for him, speak for him. He was second, he was second place in the four-by-two, fourth place in the five, and fifth place in the four-by-four. Every event that he competed in at the State Meet, he was All-State in. Andrew Holmes was eighth place in the high jump. He also competed in the 55-meter hurdles and did very well. Stephen May was second place in the four-by-two relay and fifth place in the four-by-four relay. Bryce Miller was fifth place in the shot put. We had Carter Penagraff, which was second place in the four-by-two, and he also competed in the long jump. Elijah Stafford was fifth place in the four-by-four, and he was one spot off from being All-State in the 1,000. He placed ninth. For the girls, we had Julia Britton, eighth place in the four-by-four relay. Bailey Bettina, she was second place in the long jump, second place in the 55 hurdles, third place in the four-by-two relay, fifth place in the 300. And the same for her, every event that she competed at the State Meet, she was All-State. Yes, if you, as I call your name, you guys will come up. We had Addie Carter, which was third place in the shot put. Michaela Edens was third place in the four-by-two relay, and she was, she also ran in the 55-meter dash. We had Matty Galloway, which was third place in the four-by-two relay and eighth place in the four-by-four relay. Ally Jones, eighth place in the 1,000, and also eighth place in the four-by-four relay. And we had Savannah Parsons, which was the State Champion in the long jump. She also doubled up and was the State Champion in the high jump. She was second place in the triple jump, third place in the four-by-two, eighth place in the 55, and eighth place in the four-by-four. And same to speak for her, every event that she competed in, she was All-State and came out to be a double State Champion winner. Other state performers that we want to note was Mia Fortner. She's, she was a ninth grader this year, and to be able to compete in the, she was in the high jump. She did very well as a freshman. She was a little bit nervous, but we were extremely proud of her. The girls' four-by-eight, that consisted of Ally Jones, Ava Stafford, Alyssa Lawls, and Marissa Levesey. Our boys' four-by-eight, which was Elijah Stafford, Michael Hines, Candem Hall, and Chase Weston. At this time, I would like to recognize the Class II Indoor Girls State Championship Team. As I call your name, if you will come up, we have Julia Britton. Addie Carter. Leah Cowden. Michaela Edens. Mia Fortner. Madison Galloway. Ally Jones. Alyssa Lawls. Marissa Levesey. Savannah Parsons. Elijah Stafford. And Molly Lynn. Congratulations to both our boys' and girls' teams on a successful indoor season, and we are extremely proud of all of them.
The last thing I'll say is, I think if you're not there, you may not know this, but so many things can go wrong over the course of those two days, and both groups, but this group in particular, that weekend had to do things exceptionally right in other areas to make those things happen. So, I was super impressed.
Coach Carroll, I'd like to say, you know, when we redid the track, we had some people who said, can't believe we were spending all that money because we had not had a lot of success. But talk about a return of investment with what you all have done, we really appreciate that.
I'd like to add also, when we first got on the board, Ms. Haley, Mr. Williams and I, there were, we were worried about the track team and concerned of how many were going down. At that time, I think six kids went out until we got the track fixed and repaired. And listen, you all have done amazing. You, I'm so proud of you all, and way to go Savannah Parsons. You all made it count. You put us on the map, and I'm just so, so proud of you. And Coach, you're number one in my book.
I think one more came in behind you there, Coach.
Yes, there's Connor Early. And Bryce. Yes, Bryce. Bryce, again, he was fifth in the shot put. Connor Early was second place in long jump, second place four-by-two, fifth place triple jump, fifth place four-by-four relay, and seventh place 55 dash, and he was also the Region 2D Athlete of the Year.
We like adding those signs up before ladies do theirs.
Everyone needs to go to a track meet, watch these kids, especially, but to watch Coach Sheena.
Run back and forth.
Run back and forth and pushing these kids in track and across the cross-country. She's amazing, and we're just so glad we have you, the motivation.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you all again.
Mr. Chairman, next up, I believe we have, we have Coach Garcia and Coach Lopez. I don't know if I ever saw them come in. It may be. We had two state competitors in wrestling, brothers Owen Penix and Eli Penix. Eli finished fourth in the 132-pound weight class, and Owen finished sixth in the 145-pound weight class, so we want to appreciate their outstanding effort in the state wrestling tournament. Next up, we have the VSBA Division Art Contest winners. Ms. Beltrane, are you going to do that one since Ms. Willis is not here?
Yeah, I think so. I think they're back here. The art winners, yeah.
The three right here are the winners. At elementary, we had Ms. Isabella DiVerdilio from Rose Hill Elementary. I think she's been a little bashful.
Yes. Aw, come on. You can show your artwork. Come on. Yes. Come show your artwork. Show them what you did. Go, hold that up so everyone can see it. Show it so everyone can see. Show everybody. Thank you so much.
At middle school, we had Hunter Lawson from Pennington Middle. And then at the high school, Ashley Klaste from Lee High School.
It's amazing. Show them that. Wow. Look at that.
That is beautiful.
We had multiple entries, these were the three picked in each category, and what will happen next is their three pieces of artwork will go to the regional VSBA meeting. I think Mr. Fortner took them last year. And then they'll compete against everyone in the region, and I think it was last year or the year before last, we had one that won that was on display at the VSBA State Office. So, we wish all of them good luck and appreciate their effort on that and the good work they did on that art competition. Next up, we have Skills USA state competitors. Maybe not. I don't know if any of them are here. Morgan Graham finished third in electricity. Seth Cowden finished fourth in electricity. Myra Parker, Eliza Morrison, Dylan Mosley, Angel Art, Crime Scene Investigation, finished fourth. Ethan Hughes, Collision Repair, and Connor Polly in Automotive Maintenance and Light Repair. Ethan Pennington Welding and Brandon Holland Welding. So, appreciate those, and I know when they went to region, they had to go all over the place, and then they went to state and competed, so appreciate that, and all the competitors in Skills USA as well. So, that's all we have for recognition, Mr. Chairman. Okay, next, we have public comment. Do we have anybody with public comment? We thought we'll move on. Next, is board comments? Does any member, do any members of the board have any comments to share?
Congratulations to all of our competitors, all the contest winners. I hope that we can recognize them next month, but Ian here, Ian Santifer, was recently, last week, elected to be the Regional President for FPLA, and he will be going in June to Richmond, is that right? For basically a week-long conference, but we're excited about that. But, and also, just a kind of a shout-out to Lee High Tennis, or not tennis, well, I don't know, I haven't seen what tennis is doing, but softball is doing tremendous. Thomas Walker Tennis is doing, doing great, so just keep up, everybody keep up the good work, and you're really representing Lee County well, so I agree.
Congratulations.
All right, next, we have consent agenda, which includes, under A, approval of minutes from the March 13, 2025 budget meeting and regular meeting, and the March 25, 2025 public hearing for fiscal year 2026, FY '26. Under B, approval of claims and expenditures. Under C, approval of the special education annual plan for 2025-2026. Under D, approval of the Lee County Career Technical Center annual plan for 2025-2026. Under E, approval of field trip, Lee County Career Technical Center, Cindy Garrett, DECA International Career Development Conference Orlando, Florida, 4/25/25. Thomas Walker High School, Rose Martin, FFA trip to the Rocky Island County Fairgrounds, Harrisonburg, Virginia, 4/24/2025. Under F, approval of summer school dates, May 27, 2025 through June 12, 2025, 8:30 a.m. to 1 p.m. G, approval of summer work hours, May 27, 2025 through August 1, 2025. H, approval of update to LCSVP-GCBD-Br1 staff attendance incentive. And I, approval of authorization for the Division Superintendent to field vacancies existing or occurring between April 10, 2025 through May 8, 2025. Do you have any comments on those? If you have any questions, I can answer them, but. Well, so we have a motion.
I'll say it.
Any discussion? All in favor, stick your bow up, state the "yea." Aye. Motion carries. Consent agenda is through. Next, reports of the board, are there any reports of the board? Are you going to give your, you're going to give your report now?
I'll vote.
Yeah, he's, well, my, he's gone on the senior trip, I think Ian's going to do Lee High and Thomas Walker. Okay, you're going to go ahead and do those, Mr. Reports?
I'll do Lee High first. So, first, SCC LA competed in a state competition at Virginia Beach. Twelve students competed and three qualified to attend the national competition in Orlando, Florida. Skills USA competed at the state competition in Roanoke, Virginia. One student placed brawlings, third place, and five students placed fourth in their competitions. Last week, well, this week, the senior class is traveling to Orlando, Florida for their senior trip. All spring sports are in full swing, many upcoming activities and events with clubs to soon take place. That's all Lee High. Thomas Walker, we're still going with the pop-it, drop-it, where you take the pop tops off of a pop can and replace it in a basket. That's a tough question. And it's to raise money for the Ronald McDonald Foundation. Senior trip was last week, they went to Orlando, Florida as well. The FPLA state trip was also last week. Nobody placed in state, but there was, I was elected president of the region, but everybody did a great job there. Tennis is in full swing, track has now started up in full swing. Tomorrow, we have Beta Club banquet for all our Beta Club members. Softball and baseball's in full swing. Yeah, that's all I've got.
All right, thank you. Next, reports of the Division Superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First, on enrollment, we are up 10 from last month. We were at 2759, we were at 2769 this month. Again, that fluctuation from month to month, it's foster children, we have a huge number that come in, go out, that's the fluctuation we are seeing every month. Operations update is in your package. Any questions on those? We've been busy getting a lot of stuff fixed and taken care of. Transportation update is there. Any questions on any of those? School audits. Ms. Beltrane and I met with the accountant today, we gave you all a copy of the school audit. Those are the activity funds within the schools. The lady said that we had done a lot better this year. We've had some new people in bookkeeping at individual schools, and they've done well, which we always have room for improvement. So, she gave us some, the list that we want to share with the bookkeepers and the principals on what we can do to improve, but we want to give you all a copy of those audits. Update on health insurance. It looks like that fund is continuing to do well, so when we get a final budget, we'll be able to reduce the rates on the health insurance. The employee contribution and the employer contribution part, I think that's the first time in, I want to say, seven or so years that we've had a real good health insurance year, so I want to give you an update on that. Update on the state budget. The General Assembly got back together for the reconvene part. They, the terminology that was told to me was they passed by many of the bills and amendments, and what that meant was since they did not take a vote on those, they go back to the governor in the original language that was approved by the General Assembly, so he can either sign them or veto them. But still don't have an approved state budget, which impacts us, which impacts the county, so kind of in limbo on that, but my understanding is he has to make the second to make his decision on what he's doing with the state budget. So, maybe by next month, we'll kind of know where the state is and that'll trickle down. Also, I want to mention that April is Autism Awareness Month, so, and April the 2nd is National Autism Awareness Day. We have a number of students who suffer from autism, so keep those people in mind. April the 2nd was always, was also Paraprofessional Appreciation Day. Appreciate all of our paraprofessionals and what they do in the schools every day. April the 4th was National School Librarian Media Specialist Appreciation Day. Appreciate our librarians and media specialists and what they do to help the students. It's shifted a whole lot. Some of us were in school, y'all know we had all the books in the library, now it's a lot more electronic, so appreciate them and what they do. This week is National Assistant Principals Week. We appreciate our assistant principals in our high schools. April is Workforce Readiness Month, and April the 16th is Workforce Readiness Day. A lot of that goes along with the CTE program and getting people ready to work and the skills and the jobs that they do. Later this month, we have April the 22nd, which is School Board, School Bus Driver Appreciation Day. Really appreciate those people and what they do hauling our children back and forth every morning and every afternoon. And April the 23rd is Administrative Professional Day. Appreciate everything they do in the offices and the schools across the division.
All right, thank you. Next, under unfinished business, is the MOU, Memorandum of Understanding between Lee County Board of Supervisors and Lee County Public Schools.
Mr. Chairman, you know, we've been back and forth from Mr. Wright, I'll ask, I can't remember the date of that meeting, when the MOU got started, the.
It was our February meetings.
No. Um, we've tossed back drafts multiple times. We appreciate Mr. Sturzel working on those. We have one that I sent to all of you, that we sent to Mr. Wright, I think he shared it with his board members. I think Mr. Sturzel and I may be at a point that we say the one that you all have, we have no issue signing and, but I mean, if, we've got members of the Board of Supervisors here, county administrator, to talk about, you know, why we're here and what we're doing, because, I mean, the budget's a big part of our, what we got going on is a big part of what you all have going on. I don't know if you all want to speak.
I can, if you want to do that.
I'll leave that up to the board, I mean, that.
Sure. Or if the other two want to come up and speak, welcome to, Mr. Williams.
I do appreciate you all, Mr. Chair, members of the board. The budget process, of course, this is really my first rodeo with it, as, you know, the county administrator being the first time, but I know there was a lot of things that, there was a lot of challenges in the budget last year. We're going to continue those again this year. We do have a reassessment that is coming that will, we're actually going to run a short fiscal year this year. We did the split billing, which helped a lot of things with our budget in the calendar year that is the fiscal year '25. We're going to run the, the new assessment will start July 1, and we'll run through the fiscal year of '26. So, it's, it's going to be a little bit of a change, and we're going to have to do a good job of educating, you know, the community about what actually is happening with that. But basically, what we're doing is we're running a short fiscal year, basically January to June the 30th, under the current assessment with the current tax rate. After that, then there'll be the new assessment, which, if everybody knows, it's been nine years since we've had an assessment done here, and the property values with the housing market that happened through the COVID and all of the other things that blossomed, for the lack of a better term. The land values actually went up quite a bit, and we've not had one of those in a while, so one of the concerns that we have is that people's going to get their reassessment values, and they're going to be a lot larger than they are today. You know, we had, three years ago, I think there was an assessment come through that the board then, they threw that thing out, and it, I was actually a big naysayer on that assessment myself, so there's a lot of changes in this one. I think this is a lot better assessment. And one of the things that people don't know with this assessment, the county don't just do this, you know, we, we have this thing we have to go through that is required by code, and actually, when you do the assessment, it goes through the judicial branch, really more than it does the tax branch, but there is money that comes in through what is called public service, and the way that, that tax is calculated, if you have a public service that's out there that you're going to get taxes from an entity on, it's based on a ratio, based on what the value of the property that it's assessed at and what the actual sale value is. So, with the assessments being extremely low the way they are right now, if you had a piece of property and it was valued, you know, let's just say $100,000 on an assessment, but you actually sold it for $200,000, which is not unheard of these days if you're selling a house, then what happens is that's a 50% ratio. So, whenever the tax goes to these public service entities, they get an amount, and they pay 50% of it. So, there's a lot of money out there on the table based on an assessment that we really need to get done. Now, to that being said, that doesn't mean your taxes go up because your assessment went up, because it's illegal for the Board of Supervisors to raise your taxes more than, or up to a percent, they don't have to have a public hearing, but anything above a percent, you have to have a public hearing and go through all of the due diligence to make sure the public knows there's going to be a tax increase. So, anybody that gets one of these, that doesn't mean your taxes are going to, you know, double or whatever, that, that's not what that means. It's something that is required. The reason that I say that is, in this fiscal year that we're in right now, which was a struggle to start with, we actually have that split billing that's coming out, that people will get a bill on here in a few weeks that will be due on May the 31st. That is based on the old assessment and the old tax rate at the 74 cents, just for real estate. Now, the personal property, all of that stuff will still stay on the annual that's due October 31st. You won't see any bill from that, it's just going to be on the real estate. With that split billing, what happened was is we actually got a half of a year's worth of personal, or the real estate taxes in this fiscal year, which added about $3,300,000 to the budget this year. And we still had a shortfall. We also added 1.6, I believe, 1.4 or 1.6 million dollars from ARPA funds that was carried over from COVID into the budget. So, you had 3.3 and another 1.4 added to the budget that was there to balance our budget out. We don't have that this year, so the Board of Supervisors does not have those funds We're going to struggle even more this year than we did last year, and that was the reason that, that the board came up with the idea to try to do the MOU, so that there wasn't any contingency between the Board of Supervisors and your board, so that we could sit down and, you know, hash this out to see what needed to happen. I know, and everybody knows, and I think it's kind of fitting that we were here on a night that they, that they, the track team was here because anybody that knows me, they knows I love track. That is a team sport, but you're competing against yourself, and there's, there's something really special about track, and I am so happy for those young people that they got to experience that. Had kids that were on the track team and stuff whenever they were here, and the track was not in good shape, and you all done a real good job of getting that track fixed, because we couldn't hold them beat. It was, it was really, it was, anyway, it's great, so I won't harp on that, I'm just tickled. As somebody that doesn't have a kid in school anymore, I am so glad that that's there and you all do a good job with it. So, everybody does try to do a good job, okay? And we want to be there. The problem that the Board of Supervisors has this year, and I've, and there's a couple of them here, and I don't want to speak for everybody, but with everything that is happening, I know Mr. Williams was here a couple of meetings ago, I think, and, and he always speaks eloquently, it's kind of hard, that's a hard act to follow, but one of the things that was said, and I think that you said it maybe, you know, that the, that the kids are the most important thing that is out there. Well, that is true, that they are extremely important. Where we are today is we need to get the, the schools funded the way that they need to be funded. We also need to make sure that we have EMS, which, that's becoming an extreme issue in the county because volunteers are not what they used to be. We're having to do paid, paid agencies, all of the things that happen, and if you talk to the EMS, and maybe Josh can speak to this a little better than I can, but EMS agencies, you don't make money running 911 calls, and we need to make sure that we run all the 911 calls that are out there, and we just, that's my phone. And we just, that's my phone.
Time to wake up.
You don't mind the sound, Rob?
Well, you know what? That was an alarm, which is funny. I don't know. I'll have to figure out later why I set that alarm.
Your time's up.
Anyway, and I lost my train of thought. With the EMS, we're there. And then, you know, a lot of things that you don't know, we've got a real active service department and Commonwealth Attorney's Office that we're actually well over a budget at the regional jail this year. And so there are a lot of things that happen. And one of the things, I just, I'm not trying to downplay it. I'm not trying to do anything because, you know, I don't have a kid in here anymore. I got a grandkid that's going to be hitting this school not too far from now. But I know how important things are. But what the Board of Supervisors has to deal with too is if you have a football game over here and we're not able to fund the EMS departments the way they need to be funded, will there be an ambulance here? As somebody that has been playing sports and knows that you lay there on that field, you think you're going to have a real problem and that sort of thing, we do have to have those EMS agencies. If somebody gets incarcerated for any reason at all, we have to fund the jail. If we don't fund the jail, we don't know where to put them. So it's a balancing act for the Board of Supervisors to say, okay, you know, we've got these things and all of these things are important. Social Services, Child Services Act, all of these things that happen. It's not one thing for them. And I'm not saying it's one thing for you all, because if you look at your budget, there's line item after line item after line item. Imagine trying to do that for a bunch of different agencies too and try to make sure that everybody is funded the way that they need to be so that we have police cars on the road, ambulances on the road. If somebody's incarcerated, we can get them into jail and educate the kids. So all I ask is to be real patient with the Board of Supervisors and we will be patient with you all trying to work through all this stuff. Now, I do know we would love to get together with, you know, a committee at some point in time and start hashing some of these other funds out. And I am new, so I will apologize to every one of you that are there. There's a lot of things that I don't know. And as I was going through Mr. Dean's budget, I called him and I said, I don't know what this is. Okay, you know, and I don't know what this is. I do know that class sizes are really important. I think the smaller class size that you can get, I mean, this is personal opinion, okay? The smaller class size you can get, the better off the kid is. Live that. You know, I won't go into the big story, but I fought when my daughter was in the third grade to get a class size smaller because I know how important that is. You know, there are a bunch of things that needs to happen. We just need to sit down as a team and work through all this. And I do appreciate Mr. Dean. He's been a big help to me, okay? And I appreciate everybody on this board. I just, that's kind of where we are. And we're into our budget process now. Actually, I was going to submit our budget to our board. It'll be the first that they'll see it in Tuesday's meeting that's coming. And to be quite honest with you, it didn't hurt you. So and we have a lot of challenges. So I'm just asking if you all would be real patient with us and that board and let's try to work through this and get it done so that everybody, every citizen in the county gets everything that can be afforded to them based on the amount of money that we've got. Now, that being said, getting back to the reassessment, there is always the opportunity to raise taxes, all right? If there's something that has to be funded, knowing that we don't have the money now the way it is, if we need to fund something, there would have to be a tax increase. I mean, that's straight up. So nobody ever wants to pay any more taxes, but everybody always wants, well, you got to do this, you got to do this, you got to do this. But they don't, you know, pay anymore. And the county is, just as your halls do, their light bill goes up, their water bill goes up, insurance goes up. You know, the cost of everything increases as it goes. And right now, the county is operating on what basically is 2008 money. Well, that's a lot. Up to last year, they were operating on 2008 money and they had the tax increase that went to 74 cents just on the real estate. So it makes it tough. So that's kind of where we are. Don't want to be doom and gloom with everything. I mean, I think there's a silver lining in all of this when we get to the end of it. But that's the realization of where we are.
Thank you, gentlemen.
But I appreciate you having me. And on a personal note, my mother-in-law passed away back a couple of weeks ago and you all sent flowers and that was greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you, Rob. Thank you all for coming, Roger. Thank you. All right, next we go on to.
I think Josh.
Oh, Josh.
I think Roger does, too.
Yeah, just to address what Robbie was talking about with the EMS issue. Just last month, we had to forward some funds to keep two agencies open. We have six EMS agencies in the county. You know, we have Keokke, Dryden, Pennington, Jonesville, Thomas Walker. Thomas Walker and St. Charles were the two that we had for the funds that they were going to close. And there's also another one. It's a possibility of closing. So we're looking at three agencies that could possibly close. And for years, you know, the county had given our agency, it might included, you know, we operated off $10,000 a year. I mean, you can't live a household with that kind of money, you know what I'm saying? Then it got up to 15. Then last year, we upped it to 20. You know, given the short files, it's safe, I won't name the agency. But you know, they're averaging anywhere from 60, they're losing $60,000 to $114,000 a year. When COVID came along, we was, the reimbursement was doing good. We was averaging around $400 a call that we could reimburse. Now it's down on average like at my department, Dryden, $180 a call. So by the time you pay all the bills and do all the things you do to fuel and everything, it's, we've been struggling for years. And finally, everything, just like when I got on the board, the culmination of years past has caught up to us and it's hit our board harder than anything. And but we're going to try, I want to tell you, we're going to do the best to work with you all on everything. Just to understand, we were in a shortfall and me and Robbie was discussing some numbers earlier. It was kind of depressing. But we've only got so much to go around and we're working, trying to fix the problem. And I'd love to be able to give $2 million extra a year to the schools and everything. But you know, we kind of got caught with pretty rough buying, you know what I'm saying? But about the park, we're going to try to work on these EMS issues because even just like yesterday, we had, it was one of the, I was telling Robbie about, one of the craziest things. We actually had a truck from every agency out on a call. And there was only two calls going on. We had a four-wheeler versus a car. It took up a lot of things. That's a rarity. On average, we only have three available ambulances, three to four available at any time. And then once Jonesville gets on a call, Pennington gets on a call, Dryden, and Heretown County. I mean, I've went all the way to Rose Hill, Ewing, everywhere on multiple calls. And so it's been very rough trying to get all this figured out. But we're working on it and like I said, we do everything we can to help the school system and just be a little patience with us and bear with us and let's all try to get through this together.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Your turn, Roger.
Well, my name's Roger. I'm District Two Supervisor. This is, four out of five of us are new. We've been, we wasn't blindsided. We know, you know, it was going to be tough. We're all trying and I want just, I ain't going to say much, but anyway, I'm District Two Supervisor, but I don't want to be limited to that. I want to be a representative for the whole county. And that's what I hope that we can all do together is represent Lee County. And every meeting we have, folks, I tell you, can you, quit, can any of you guys say that we get good news every meeting we have? It is, it is, it's really, it's really sad. And the EMS, you know, I just took it for granted. When I was 19 years old, they picked me up from a motorcycle wreck. It was all then volunteers. Today, like Josh said, it's not. And that is one of the big things that we are hit with. And just like Robbie said, you have to have them for a football game. And that's just one of the hurdles in the prison or the jail over here. But as a whole, I hope that we can not just work for just one district that we are at. I hope we can all work together and pull together and bring Lee County out on top.
Thank you.
And I won't put you all on the spot, but I do have a couple of questions if you will. I think Mr. Sturzel and I are at the point that we could recommend to our board to sign this, which I think you all signed a different one, that our board wasn't willing to sign. I think Robbie and I are spending a long time on the MOU and not getting, actually on the budget aspect, I guess is a good way of putting it. If our board did sign this tonight, is there a good chance that you all are going to sign it or are we going to have to go through this again?
I have not heard from my whole board yet, so honestly, I can't get you an answer on that. I may get you an answer before next Tuesday. If not, Tuesday would be the drop dead date with us, well, we'll have our meeting Tuesday evening. But I haven't heard from everybody yet.
And I guess the second question I've got, do we really need this to work together? Because I mean, it was handed to us at the meeting we came to and, you know, I mean, we're going to come to the table. And like you all said, I mean, the state has thrown a lot of money at education, which doesn't help you all at all because some of it's local efforts, which you have to do, some of it's local match, which, you know, we asked you to do. But where do we go, I guess is the question. I mean, do we, do we keep working on this before we can get down to brass tacks and work on the budget? Or, you know, can we just get to work on the budget and do we have to have this? Are there going to be hard feelings if we don't sign it, if we don't have it? I guess it's some questions that I've got.
My, I can't speak for the other gentleman. Feelings to me really don't matter much when it comes to that. I mean, basically it's the numbers and how they work out. So with me, I'm more of a work on it and, you know, and do that. So I can't speak for them. I can get you an answer on that. I would like to be able to schedule a meeting with the committee, you know, as quickly as possible and get this worked through. So.
Well, I think you and I may be mentioning maybe the week after Easter is trying to get together, I think, is what you and I talked about before.
And I think that's the one. Again, I don't want to speak for my board members or anything as far as that goes. But I think we can get through this fairly quickly, just to be honest.
Why don't you and Mr. Dean just meet and he knows what the board's going to agree with. You know what your board's going to agree with and just get it done. Let's quit having meetings and talking about stuff. I mean, seriously, you can have meetings that are inefficient. They accomplish nothing. Just like the memorandum of agreement was vague. It didn't have, it didn't have specific language that either board would really know what they were agreeing to. And so we don't sign things like that in my law office. We make sure they mean something and both sides know what they're signing. And what was presented to us wasn't that. So we're trying to change it to be more specific. And I think we can work this out. I don't see why we wouldn't be able to.
Yeah, actually, I met with Mr. Dean and kind of suggested that change myself to try to get that, you know, the degree out of it. Hopefully, what we would have said, then I think all the MOU is there to do is just to work, I don't know, so maybe a framework or something.
We have provide a catch.
Which is not, I'll agree with you. I don't know if that's required to do that. It's a thing. But again, I can't speak for my whole board. I'm a district gentleman. I should give you their opinion of it. But if you'll allow me to give me a day or so to just follow those guys and get back together. I will say that I do enjoy working with Brian.
You're the first person to ever say that.
The budget process is tough with what we go through and looking at all of his breakdowns that he's got. His is not any easier than ours is. So it is pretty tough. So I think we're a lot like-minded and we just want the best for everybody. And since everybody's working at that one goal, I think that's the thing that, I mean, I wouldn't mind doing that. I don't know what my board would think about that.
I'll say this, this is, this is what both boards have asked for as far as, as I've seen it, of just the agreement of us working together for all the schools, for the county, to the agreement of we're going to come to the table and meet every year. If we need to meet more than once a year, let's do it. There's complete transparency of every category that is optionally funded. That's for us and for y'all. And so I really like it and myself, I'm willing to sign this.
And there's no hard feelings. I mean, I think I said something one month, you know, I was dreading it. I mean, part of the reason I'm dreading it, it's a long hour. I think even Mr. Flair coming there one night with a pizza, I think he knew it was going to be a long night one night. I mean, I don't think it's anything any of us looked forward to. I guess it's not a better way for me to say that, but you know.
If I could make one suggestion, I mean, to be honest with you, last year wasn't great, okay? It just wasn't. I mean, you know, and I didn't, I didn't want there to be any animosity back and forth, that sort of thing. I think one thing that would help me, I know it will help me, is some of these programs, I am not educated to what they are. And so if I know what these programs are and, you know, how they're going to be, you know, the funds is going to be used and that sort of thing, it would make that easier to make a recommendation one way or another. Or even, you know, in the committee, if we had that, you know, so at least we're getting an education. I don't ever claim to be an expert in anything and I learn something every day. So if I can learn something new, I'm tickled to death.
Ms. Belcher can speak to this too, but we've been working on a document that has like the name of the category, some brief clarification on what that really means. And then whether it's local effort, local match, you know, last year, we even asked the state superintendent to forgive a couple of the local matches on the VPSA technology and the security grant. And I put all that in there and I'm finalizing that document so we could have it at that meeting and share it. So.
Mr. Wright, I'm glad that you mentioned that because it makes a big difference just seeing words out there. And if you know what that entitles or includes, it makes a big difference. So I'm sure you all would be more than happy to let them know what all that entails.
I mean, we're trying to make clear, just simple language that we can understand, not state code language, you know. But I mean, at this time, Mr. Chairman, I mean, I would recommend you all sign that one and we could give it to them.
Let's do that.
I'm willing to.
Do you want to make a motion for that?
I think so. I think Mr. Sturzel.
Yes, I'll make a motion.
Have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, six, five, a standing aye? Any opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Wright, what we'll do is the one I have here in front of me has draft on it. I'll print one here in just a little while, ask the board to sign it before they leave and bring you a document signed tomorrow, Monday.
So let's move on to action and discussion items. A, action if you need to issue request for proposals, RFP, for the following bid processes for fiscal year 2026. Dairy products, pest control, and student services.
Mr. Chairman, I'm asking that Ms. Belcher be allowed to do an RFP for the dairy products, which we may only have one vendor that's board and that will bid on it. Pest control, you know, we had a shift this year in the pest control. We need to bid that out. And student services, which encompasses everything that we do on the special ed side, we're asking that we can have the RFP to get those processes bid.
Okay. So do we have a motion to issue those requests? Have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, six, five, a standing aye? Motion carries. Under B, action if you need to approve renewal of current propane contract for fiscal year 2026.
Mr. Chairman, the current propane contract is out, but we put in the language in there that we could renew that and they are willing to renew it and even at a reduced rate than what we currently have.
What cause that, please?
Lee Propane, which is a subsidiary of Feral Gas.
Did we bid that out?
Bid it out last year. And we put in the language that we could renew it without having to bid it again and we're asking that it be renewed and they agreed to reduce the rate with the renewal.
Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor, six, five, a standing aye? Any opposed? Motion carries. C, action if you need to designate funds, designate funds for distribution for school board policy, GCBD-Br1, staff attendance incentive.
Mr. Chairman, this is where we have the policy that if we have some funding that we could use to buy back some sick days. It's kind of a, either we buy them back early or we pay them when they retire and we're asking that we be allowed to use that policy and buy back some sick days this year with some funds.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
Certainly.
Second? Nancy, is that a second? Okay. Any discussion? Nancy, is that a second? Okay. Any discussion? All in favor, signature by a standing aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. D, action if you need to approve new courses for 2025, 2026 school year.
Mr. Chairman, Lee High is asking if we could add the first diversified occupations as a course. They have a staff member on staff that has the license to teach it. It's a course that you go through different occupations and kind of a, at a briefer time than taking a full block in a CTE course to give people some other options, like occupations they might be interested in doing after they complete their high school career. So we're asking that that be approved for an option for Lee High School at this time.
All right. Do we have a motion?
Second.
Second?
I'll say it.
Any discussion? All in favor, signature by a standing aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. E, action if you need to award contract related to RFP, Form 470, Category 2, Services, Network Equipment to E+.
Mr. Chairman, we have that RFP out there for network equipment. The only bid was E+ plus. This is a vendor that Ms. Sumter and her team has used many times in the past and is very well satisfied with. So we're asking that we approve awarding that RFP to E+.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
I'll say it.
Second?
I'll say it.
Any discussion? All in favor, signature by a standing aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. I'll make a motion. I'll be going to closed session to discuss personnel under Virginia, Code of Virginia, Section 2.2-3711A1, to discuss student discipline under Code of Virginia, Section 2.2-3711A2, impending and threatened litigation under Code of Virginia, Section 2.2-3711A7. Do we have a second?
A second.
Any discussion? All in favor, signature by a standing aye. Any opposed? We are now in closed session.